Good evening, everyone. Let's all rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone again. Real quick, we'll just do the roll call and make note that we have all of our board members here tonight. I do not have any executive session announcements, but before public comment, I wanted to make a quick statement, and I honestly wish we had more people here tonight. But we'll talk to the audience we have. I just wanted to say, everybody knows, I'm sure by now, that we had an incident at Lower Pots Grove Elementary School yesterday that involved a potentially dangerous object discovered inside the school that turned out to be an artificial grenade. So I'm gonna skip right to the outcome. And the outcome was that all of our districts' safety procedures were enacted precisely and professionally, resulting in a quick, and more importantly, a safe conclusion for everyone involved. In all, the incident occurred at 9:20 a.m., and the all-clear was given just before 10 a.m. And so, in a little less than 40 minutes, everyone in the building was moved to safety, emergency responders addressed the situation, and children were safely on their way back to the classrooms, which is pretty amazing. And on behalf of the board and myself, I would like to commend everyone involved on their outstanding response to the situation. Our deepest thanks and appreciation goes out to the classroom teacher, who took the immediate necessary actions to alert the building administration, to Dr. Williams for her quick response, and all of the building staff for their timely and safe execution of emergency procedures, and guiding the students and staff to safety. To Brian and his team at CMD, CMD Transportation for activating buses to assist in evacuating personnel and students if and when needed, and to the bus drivers who selflessly sat in front of the school ready to transport students. To Dr. Shirk and his staff for their strong leadership, planning, and execution under pressure, and to our true partners, the Lower Pots Grove Police Department, and all the emergency responders for their fast action in addressing the potential danger. To all of you, thank you very much. I always try to find a silver lining when it comes to any situation where things happen that we wish hadn't happened. And in this case, I think we experienced a full-blown, this-is-not-a-drill dress rehearsal in a situation where there was never any real danger. And we can now look back proudly, having had no negative outcomes, and determine what we can improve upon for next time. I'm thankful for all of the positive that we can find here, and I'm confident that if there was anything, and there is anything, that could be done different or better, it will be identified and added to our action plan for when something like this never happens again. So, I wrote that all down because I didn't want to mess it up, and I hope I didn't leave anybody out. But, you know, I've been in this district for 15 years now, 12 of them, I've had kids in the schools. A lot of things have happened, from, you know, kids passing out at choir practice, you know, an accidental Swiss Army knife getting brought in somebody's Boy Scout bag from a weekend camping trip. And every time, I think we handle it great, and still every time, I think we get better. But, I mean, yesterday was definitely potentially the worst thing, and I think everybody did a great job. And I just want to make sure that everyone's recognized and duly commended. I really can't put it into any other words than an amazing job and thank you. So, I just wanted to make that statement and catch everybody while I still had undivided attention. So, thank you, everyone, and we'll move on with the meeting now. With that, I have no requests for public comment. Is there anybody who wants to make public comment at this time? Okay, so I will hand it off to Dr. Shirk.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Tonight, we had scheduled to have Deb Lewis, one of our school psychologists who retired in December, here tonight to honor her and her time she spent in the district. She was unable to be here tonight, but I just, for the record, wanted to just say some brief words regarding Deb. She joined the Pots Grove family in November of 1991 as a school psychologist. During her time in the district, she worked with students in all grade levels, most recently at the high school. Debbie enjoys reading and is looking forward to having time to relax and enjoy a good book. She is also thankful to have more time to spend with her family. So, I would like to just recognize Debbie as a job well-done, and obviously, her gift, we will make sure that she gets it in the near future. So, I just want to thank Debbie Lewis for her service. Thank you.
The next part of this section is the MCIU Legislative Liaison. Part of our responsibility as a Pots Grove school district is to have one of our board members appointed to really be a resource for us in the Montgomery County School District Legislative Committee. So, what I'm gonna ask, really, the board to do tonight is to add a person, add a board member, as a resource for us that can help us keep track of the latest legislative and the impact that it might have on education. We do have, you know, meetings scheduled in February, March, April, May, and June. It doesn't have to be one person specifically, it could rotate through the board, but if someone wants to take that commitment on at this time, that would be great. So, I'm really just gonna pass it back and see if, who might be interested in, you know, working with the IU and the legislative team down there for the remainder of the school year. I'll do it, unless anybody else wants to. I did have my orientation for MCIU Board yesterday, met Dr. George, and he gave me more information about this. And I know Dr. Shirk just said it, but this is not an elected, an appointed, and then elected position like the board membership, so this can rotate. We can send alternates, but it is our opportunity to have legislative representation through MCIU. So, if everybody's okay with it, I'll just volunteer for this through the end of the school year, same as I did for the MCIU Board. Okay.
On the legislative note, I don't know, maybe I should have waited for new business, but it seems appropriate legislation. This afternoon, I got an urgent email, as you will, from the PSBA Solicitor Section indicating, and some of you may remember this, every several years going back, that Governor Rendell, the state legislature, has put forward a bill to not allow school districts to do what we call reverse assessment appeals. I mean, you can appeal your assessment on your House, as can any business, and the district can also. We seldom do it. I don't even know in Pots Grove, it's been years, Dave, if we've done one, but you have that ability if you believe a property is under assessed. And they want to take that ability away, and I don't want to get onto a long soapbox about it. I've always been mystified, literally mystified by this, because I can't understand what our representatives are thinking, because, think it through, if we can't bring an appeal to get an appropriate tax for someone we think is under assessed, who pays the difference? We do. And so, it's a sense of fairness in terms of, I haven't seen boards abuse this, and you can't abuse it, because if you're not correct in your appeal, you'll lose. Now, it costs somebody some money, but I've never seen one where a district brought an appeal, because usually, they find one to be egregious. And as a result, again, I don't know, it's a legislative issue. Apparently, the bulletin was very urgent in terms of, apparently, it's coming up again on short notice, and so, if any of you should, in the next 24 hours, I don't know if any of you do this, if you're in contact with any of your representatives, or you want to email, I believe, and I'm gonna answer questions, I don't want to hold you up, I believe it's appropriate for the taxpayers who pay the taxes, you and everybody sitting here, or anybody watching the stream, if we can't appeal an assessment we think is significantly lower than it should be, the difference is made up by all of us. So, again, I've never gotten a good answer as to why they have this passion for this. I have some suspicions, but I don't think I should voice those. So, that's just out there for you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. This time, we would like to have a review of the minutes from the Facilities and Operations that took place on the 9th of January. Mr. Lindgren.
Bear with me, I've lost my voice. This is sick. Basically, what? If you want to just read the minutes off of here, I won't go over the, behind the radios. And the other two are action. So, we don't have to talk about them. Just the first one.
Okay, I'm gonna read the first key point from the minutes for Mr. Lindgren. "Mr. Nestor provided details and explanation about the need to replace and upgrade our two-way radios for improved communication within and between schools. Mr. Nestor explained the difference between digital and analog radios and how they are currently utilized. The committee agreed to recommend the purchase of 34 digital radios to replace all existing analog radios at a cost of $10,121.80 plus shipping. There may be a need to purchase additional repeaters if the issues continue after the upgrade of the radio equipment to all digital. The committee asked the administration to look into attempting to sell the old radios rather than trading them in." That's the, okay. I guess, just to be helpful, if you don't mind, this was on the agenda for tonight, but we pulled it. Based on what happened yesterday, Dr. Shirk and his team thought it might be better to have this go to our Safe Schools Subcommittee on Safety and Security, because we have first responders sitting on that committee who can possibly advise us a little bit on best-case or best-practice when it comes to this purchase, just to make sure, now, based on what happened yesterday, are we doing the right thing. So, we're gonna, we're gonna hold off a little bit to get that additional input from a different group of professionals, and then we'll revisit it. Okay.
Okay, any further questions regarding the minutes? Then what I'm gonna ask the board to do is accept the minutes of the Operations Facility Committee meeting that was held on January 9th as presented.
Motion and a second to accept the minutes. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Moving on to Section 6, the Report of the Superintendent. These are personnel items. I ask that the recommended action to approve the professional staff appointments as submitted.
A second. So, we have a motion and a second to combine professional staff, 6-1, 6-2, which is appointments and granting of tenure.
Let me just say for the board, the public's application of the tenure after the three years under the school code, if the professional employees has satisfactory ratings, it's something we're required to do, as you will. They're entitled to this.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Moving on to action items under the Business Department. "The district asked the board to approve payment of the High School, Pots Grove High School renovation project invoice as presented."
Motion and a second for payment of the construction invoice. For anybody not looking at the agenda, the current amount due is $3,572.42, which is what we're voting on right now. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Moving on to the middle school hot water heater replacement. What we're asking the board to do is to authorize the administration to replace the hot water heater at the middle school at a cost not to exceed $17,000 as presented.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Our next item is the West Pots Grove Elementary Playground Repairs. We're asking the board to authorize administration to solicit bids for the repair and replacement of the West Pots Grove Elementary Playground Asphalt Surface.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
Quick question, where would the funds be coming from for this playground?
This is part of the Capital Projects Fund, yeah. Market Street Sports money can be used at the discretion of the board.
So, right, definitely, maybe for discussion after, but we'll get the bids and identify a bid to consider and go from there, and the amount, right, okay. So, any other questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Wait, did we do motion and second?
Okay, the motion carries.
Okay, moving on to conference attendance. "We are asking the board to approve the conference attendance as submitted, which is the learning without tiers, handwriting without tiers, as submitted."
Second. So, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments about this conference? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Continuing with action items and policy. "We ask the board approve the revised policy number 707, use of facilities effective July 1st, 2018." Before you move for a motion, I just wanted to emphasize that because of the workmanship, if you will, and the delays that we had regarding this policy, really, since it's been enacted over the last eight, nine months, you know, my recommendation is that we wait till July 1st and spend the next three months educating our community and all the groups of the changes that we now finally agree to that will take place. Those organizations that have paid us already under the new pay scale, what we'll do is we'll ask them if they want a refund, and/or if they're gonna use our facilities again next year, we can give them credit moving forward. But I think that the delays that we had, and sometimes, the lack of actually really wanting to know what we wanted to do, I didn't want to, you know, penalize anybody who was using our facilities. So, my recommendation is to start it on July 1st, and we'll be operating under two policies, really, at the same time, but we'll do a three-month rollout of these changes so that everybody understands what they are as we start the new school year.
So, we can still approve the policy tonight, but roll it out over 90 days? Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve policy 707 for use of facilities. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Hold your breath. We're at new business. Does anybody have any new business at this time? It's always something. Any new business at this time?
Yeah, I had one quick question. Do we get the, or does district get the MAP results from the winter session yet?
Yes.
Okay, so here's my question, or possibly asked for, as like Bill would ask for information. I know the system has the ability to project or estimate how a student may do on the upcoming PSSAs, right? What I'd like to see is possibly give us a ballpark figure of what the school is being estimated for its individual grades, so we could see, obviously, put a base number, and then, obviously, we'll see when it actually comes back as to how we did after using the MAP testing.
Thank you, Mr. Leach. Just to give you an update, and I'll start it off, and if we need help from some of our experts in the audience, we'll jump there, but our goal is to have a data review update at the February 20th Curriculum and Integration and Technology Meeting. A couple of things that would be under that umbrella. An update on the EQUA tool and the tiles that are used. We did have, we spoke with EQUA over the last several weeks, and to basically help us, as well as help the board, understand how well we did in the fall with our MAP testing. So, EQUA gave us projections for our students for this particular year. They've also let us know where our kids stand after the first MAP test. We're in the process, in the next couple of weeks, of taking the winter MAP test, so we'll get another reading, and we'll be able to have those projections regarding PSSA in the spring. So, everything you ask for, we will be able to deliver to you, and we plan to roll that out. Those, that data growth, if you will, at the Curriculum, Technology, Integration, you know, in the 20th. So, obviously, you know, we do have a committee, but all are welcome all the time with that information, and it's be a great opportunity to see, you see things that are going on as far as our students' progress. So, that'll be it. Anyone else?
Actually, I just have something really quick. We've talked quite a few times about trying to get alumni information, and, you know, and just reaching out to them. Is there any progress on that, or is it sort of stagnant? I was just curious. Some things came up recently that made me think that having some alumni input, or just hearing how they're doing, and what they're doing, and what they left Pots Grove with and think was great, or what they think, you know, could have been a little better. I was just wondering if anything like that was in the works? Or even just like a gathering, you know, like, you know, after, you know, colleges and stuff get out in May, maybe something before the end of the school year, or something like that?
Mrs. Custer, you know, I know we've talked about, I know Dr. Ziegler's not here, and I just can't, and I apologize, I can't remember exactly. There is some type of alumni relations, I thought there was some piece that we currently do, and I know some school districts do mailers with alumni, you know, at a cost. There's companies that go out and do that type of thing. So, I don't want to misspeak at this time, because I know we've, you've talked about this before, you've brought it up, and as you know, the goal in the not-too-distant future is to really have someone that looks at that on a yearly basis for us, to help monitor that progress for feedback. So, I know that, and that's right around the corner, that'll be coming up with the board update real shortly this week. So, I don't know if there's any other directors, and Mr. Dany, I know you're here, I know we've talked about it before, I can't put my finger on it, so I don't really want to comment without talking to Dr. Ziegler.
Yeah, I mean, maintaining records of alumni is an ongoing process. Some students, you know, some alumni get back to you, some alumni don't get back to you. I know we were working to have Alumni Return, or Graduate Return Day, unfortunately, got slowed down. So, with those types of things, you know, obviously, the weather impacted us there in that first week of January. However, again, maintaining those records, ongoing, I won't say struggle, but an ongoing process, certainly within the high school as students leave at the end of each year, and then kind of maintaining those, because we know that they might be switching schools, transferring, not going to school, moving from here to there, and not keeping us at the forefront of their thoughts as far as who I need to update on where I am and what I'm doing. So, again, it's an ongoing process that, between the administrative team and the counselors we work towards. I'd love to say that someday we'll have it perfected, but I won't say that any of the districts out there have a widely fine-tuned database as far as all of their alumni that they have out there.
Thank you, Mr. Dany. Mrs. Custer, I just want, you were looking like for a survey, was that the question? I just want to make sure I can...
No, I mean, just...
How we touch base, or?
Yeah, and if there was anything, you know, further in the works with, you know, reaching out. I mean, with social media now, I mean, it's gotta be a lot easier than it was.
Sure, absolutely.
But, you know, it's just, I guess, keeping them in the loop, maybe even making up a, you know, Pots Grove Alumni Facebook page, and people can join it, and then you can follow them, and they, people that want to be found will be found. The ones that want to fall off the grid will do that, and they'll do it well. So, but it would just be nice to hear, you know, I'd love to hear from alumni. I mean, we've got Scott sitting here, you know, so he's a successful alumni.
And as I mentioned, I'll do a little research with Dr. Ziegler, just to try to close that loop a little bit, but obviously, alumni relations are something, you know, with future goals, we definitely want to close that loop and have more connections, so, thank you for bringing it up.
Dr. Shirk, real quick, I saw on the little sheet we have here that we added the alumni relations committee part, if that was approved, if allowed, I'd love to see about, obviously, up to Patty, if we could add something like that to our agenda in March, and maybe get some input as well, if allowed, if it's, okay.
Dr. Shirk, just one brief comment. I know you and I had talked about this. Last semester, I had a former Pots Grove student in my class, he was one of my better students. This is just anecdotal evidence, just to let you know how well, he's a junior in engineering at Widener. So, just to let you know, our students do well competitively compared to other students. We draw primarily from southeastern PA. So, our students do do well, you know, that's one anecdotal point. So, they do do well, and they are succeeding.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on at this point to answers to previous questions, and we have the, we have the subject of substitute fill rate and the information that Mr. Parker requested. I just, you know, want to turn it back to the board, I mean, we, I know we've worked with Mr. Parker specifically to answer your questions.
with Mr. Parker specifically to answer your questions, and we have the information there. I know Dr. Harney and Mrs. Brilla have worked to put these pieces together, so that's the information there for you. I just, you know, for the board, when we ask for information like this, we just want to know, like, at times, what the method in the madness is as far as this type of information, because, you know, we've been dealing with these issues for many, many years, we've talked about this many, many times, you know, is it salary, you know, is it numbers of teachers, et cetera, and I think we put together a pretty extensive data sheet here for you in a lot of different ways. So, I just, you know, if there's anything that you're thinking about that we're not thinking about, then I sure would like to know, because, again, this is something that we do, you know, as a team, as, whether it's administration or whether it's board. So, if there's anything we can do to make it better, and there's a piece of information that you have for us, I'd surely like to know about it, so we can close any gaps that
So, if we don't need to have, I mean, right, I know, maybe we need some time to digest this, although it's pretty straightforward, but if people are thinking they want to come back and talk about this later, then please email Dr. Shirk and the rest of the board and let us know, let everybody know your thoughts if we need to revisit. Okay, so, second opportunity for public comment. Any public comment on non-agenda items that may have come up during the course of the meeting tonight? Okay, then with that, we will adjourn tonight's meeting. Thanks, everybody.
what do you dream Pots Grove can be? I know that this one has come up with the board a bunch of times. They said about possibly adding a third language.